Welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council for December 4th, 2019. Can we get a roll call, please?
Here.
Here.
Here. All right, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, welcome again. At this point of the meeting, this is when the council will take public comments from members of the audience. If anybody has anything they'd like to address the council on that is not on the agenda tonight, please step up to the podium. I see we have Ms. Winters here already, but right behind her after that.
Cindy Winter. Last night, the Cordera Town Council approved a new environmental working group. It will be focused less on adaptation, more on mitigation. Sea level rise will be a major topic. Council members David Kuhnhardt and Eli Beckman are the leads. I didn't attend, but I watched the video and listened carefully. It seemed to me that the town is inviting a wide participation, perhaps not limited to town residents. I would suggest that this council offer one of its members as a participant or liaison in that the sea does not recognize jurisdictional limits. At the TAM board meeting on November 21st, I presented a gloomy report of the rapidly increasing severity of global warming and from MIT, another worrisome report about the limits of EVs as a presumed antidote to that warning. Though Councilmember Hillmer may have received a copy of these TAM comments, I'll give the PDF to Allison and ask her to pass it around to others who might like to see it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to address it? Yes, please step forward.
Thanks for agreeing with me. My name is Dave Steinberg. I live at Spyglass Hill on top of Bonner Hill. I'd like to talk about the noise from the Tamil pious, the truck deliveries. It's gone on for decades, on and off. I've called the police, I've called the managers. They always say, they're not supposed to be there before 7:00 AM. I talked to the manager there today. They're not supposed to be there before 8:00 AM. But the trucks commonly come and they park in their driveway, sometimes 5:00, 6:00 AM. They leave their backup gongs on, they leave their generators on. The manager today told me that he has a no rule, that trucks are not supposed to be delivering on their property until 8:00 AM, but they park on the street and you can't do anything about it. There was 6:30 in the morning today, two trucks lined up on Via Casitas, and they spent hours, they just spend their backup gong on and on and on and on, and they hate to keep their generators on, and it wakes everybody up on our hill. I called the police this morning, and then I talked to a sergeant this evening. He said he couldn't do anything about it, the rules are up to the town planning office. I talked to Natalie in the planning office last July 30th, I'm still waiting for a response. She was supposed to get back to me to see what the rules are. But the thing is, like, the trucks that are just lined up in front of the Tamil pious at, you know, 5:00, 6:00 in the morning, and it makes so much noise. I looked this morning, two of them are lined up, they're parked on the hill where it says "No Parking." They're in red zones, they're blocking the whole rain, it's an hour road, and no one's doing anything about it. So I'd like someone to look into that and enforce the rules. I'd also like to know what the rules are. The police told me they didn't know if it's zoned for commercial or residential, and they didn't know if they could keep the trucks from coming early in the morning.
Okay. Can you leave your contact information with Allison Fullis, our city clerk?
Sure.
And Dan? Can we ask you to-
I don't know, I don't have a response for why the police informed this resident with the information that says he received it.
Yeah.
That's not correct information.
That's what a sergeant told me tonight. And then one more-
Sir, if you would please leave your information, I need to look into this.
Oh sure, appreciate it.
I apologize, but whatever the sergeant told you, that's not correct, so I need to find out what-
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, typically, an enforcement issue would be handled by the police.
Okay.
Hi, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Robbie Paulson. About, born and raised just right here in the Twin Cities over in Cordera. About two years ago, I was evicted with my family. My dad was a disabled veteran, my mom had Alzheimer's. It was rough. So I came here today to learn more about what's going around with renter protections. But I listened to Cindy, I remembered, I realized there's another, kind of, there's an unfair reality in the Twin Cities that when we got evicted as renters, not only did we get uprooted from our place of residence, we got uprooted from our local roots, Lions Club that we've been part of for so long. And what I think about when Cindy invites you over to join in with, you know, talk about the flooding, rising sea tides that don't know any boundaries, I think how the merging of Larkspur and Cordera is such a critical thing. Because what happens right now with the way these towns are set up is not just, it's not just a, you know, local character, what it does, it excludes renters from participating in these processes. If we get evicted and we move one mile out of the jurisdiction, we get uprooted, our voice gets subsumed. And I think that Larkspur and Cordera should become one city. And I want to just put that up there right now, that that's an important thing to continue to think about. Because not only is it good for taxpayers, but it's good for our community as a whole, where everybody gets a voice. So I wanted to throw that out there before we start this meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have a comment they'd like to address the council on that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay, excuse me. Seeing none, we have no presentations or proclamations tonight. The next item on our agenda is about a half a dozen or so items that are on the consent calendar. Does any member of the audience like to pull an item for discussion? I would like to at least pull item 4.3 to make a quick comment and then bring it back to the council. On this, I hope I got the right one. On the item regarding the local appointments for the Heritage Preservation Board, one of the things I'd like to ask the council to consider for future consideration, because it's been a discussion when the mayor and the vice mayor interviews for candidates, is that we have seven positions when all our boards and commissions only have five. So we tried to look into the historical nature of that and just couldn't find any back record of it, and the primary presumption was that as people applied, they just kind of like included them. Maybe you have a historical context having been on the council much longer. But if you go into this discussion, when you make the appointments and somebody retires, you may want to bring the number back down to five just through attrition until it makes it consistent with the rest of our boards and commissions. So it's not part of this, but I just wanted to get that on the record since it's a part of the discussion or one of the items for tonight.
Yeah, there's three people whose terms expire in June of this next year.
Yeah, and there's a vacancy.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so at this point, unless anybody else has any items they'd like to pull or comment about 4.3, I can take a motion to pass the consent calendar. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask, are there openings on commissions? Speak to the microphone.
Oh, can you come up to the microphone, please?
I heard you say there are openings on local commissions? Is there a way that, is there a place they're posted?
Yeah, they're usually posted on our website, but-
Okay.
Since you'll be contacting Allison anyway, she can give you a general sense of when those interviews will begin and the approximate time in which they'll start taking applications.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is for our city manager to give his oral report. Dan?
Very briefly, councilmembers, I wanted to remind you and the public that the calendar gets a bit jumbled in December and January for city business. So foremost, this is the only business meeting of the council for the balance of the 2019 calendar. Next week will be a ceremonial meeting to seat the new council members and to appoint a new mayor and vice mayor, and to bid a bittersweet goodbye to our acting mayor, Larry Chu. So all of that will take place next week. There's a 5:30 to 6:30 meet and greet for the two incoming council members to meet the community, and then at 6:30, the meeting will commence. And then, because our, the first Wednesday falls on January 1st, we won't be holding a council meeting that day, so the only business meeting in January will be on the 15th. In addition, as is our practice, we close City Hall during the winter and are not available to the public here in City Hall, and that will take place, for most offices will be closed from January 23rd and then reopening on, I'm sorry, December 23rd and reopening on January 6th. The planning department has decided to be open on the 23rd and 24th to issue permits, just to make sure the counter's available for folks who are still trying to get permits going into the winter break. So that service will still be available. Other than that, I'm going to turn back to you.
Okay, any questions for the city manager?
Yeah, I have.
Yes.
I have one, just in reference to this big storms we've had in the last week, we're, how did the city fair, as far as, did we have any slides, or did we have any significant street closures? I didn't read anywhere, but-
I guess significant depends on where you live and whether it affected you. There was a king tide during part of the rainstorm, so we did have backup in some of our neighborhoods, because when we have the tides and they're higher than the storm drains, which if folks want to stay, they might hear a little bit about in a later item tonight, then that does present problems for us. But we were well-prepared, thanks to our Public Works Department, and so far, we've marshaled pretty well. There's another storm rolling in here, and we're supposed to have a lot of rain on Friday. So for that one, we're actually gearing up. I think we were actually getting some pumps for the lagoon and the marina, because we think this particular storm will be a little heavier than what we experienced already.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anything else for Dan? Okay, seeing none, now it's time for councilmember reports and comments. Does anyone have any reports they'd like to make? Dan?
Just a quick update on Larkspur Smart Train Service, which will commence on December the 14th. At the Smart Board of Directors meeting today, an announcement was made regarding a pilot project that I think we want to make as widely announced as possible. Beginning with the Larkspur service, a pilot project by Smart will begin where, for the cost of slightly more than a ferry ride, one can ride the ferry and the train for the entire length of the corridor. If separate, those costs currently run close to $35. So the new one fare, including all, will be roughly $12. So I think that's a game changer with respect to the economy of ridership, and we look forward to making Larkspur the place where this is happening. So, thank you.
How long is that pilot project?
It'll begin for six months.
Six months, okay.
The policy is to look at it for close to a year, but six months is the start.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
Just briefly, not a big deal, but I just wanted to mention that this afternoon, I attended a lunch sponsored by the Marin Coalition at McGinnis Park that focused our own Larry Chu, who participated in a panel presentation on pension and other public employee benefit issues. It was very informative and very helpful and very well-received by everyone who was attending that luncheon. And I just want to take the opportunity to express my great appreciation for councilmember Chu, for his leadership on this and many other issues, but this one in particular, over the last number of years. It has helped focus the attention, not only of us here in Larkspur, but of elected officials throughout Marin County and maybe even elsewhere, on one of the biggest challenges that we have as a community financially. So Larry has provided great leadership on this issue, and it's greatly appreciated, and I will miss his role in that regard and in many other respects. So I just wanted to take that opportunity. That's it.
Thank you, Kevin. I think, just so that he gets his due credit, I mean, Larkspur was well-represented in this particular committee that met for over a year, and it included, you know, councilmember Haroff, as well as our city manager, Dan Schwartz, representing the Marin Managers Association. So Larkspur has always tried to stay on the front end of that, and hopefully with some of our recent actions, that we're in a good position to, you know, be in a good financial condition with respect to pensions and other post-employment benefits. The only thing I'd like to report on, it's kind of a nice thing, we, being former mayor Ann Morrison and myself, received an email from a woman in, judging from the area code, Ontario, Canada, who stayed at the Marriott during the public safety power shut-offs. And she was just writing to us, bringing attention and commending the manager of the Marriott's out in Larkspur Landing, that's Sam Pallivan. And he basically made his hotel available to local residents, as well as his guests, where they brought in auxiliary power and a lot of things, just to accommodate the hardships that people were enduring, having no power for, at least in my case, 45 hours. I don't know how bad it was out at Larkspur Landing. So it was nice to get a letter like that from, you know, a visitor of Larkspur and also acknowledging, you know, one of our community members. Okay, so at this time, we would now like to move into the public hearing portion, and we have the adoption of ordinance 1042, which is to make some modifications and amendments to the fire code, to bring it up to date with California laws. And we have our fire marshal, Ruben Martin, is going to make the presentation.
Thank you, Honorable Acting Mayor Two, members of the council, and members of the public. Good evening. We are here this evening to, for the public hearing portion of the introduction of ordinance number 1042, which repeals and reenacts Chapter 15.04 of, or correction, 1404 of our Larkspur Municipal Code, which deals with the fire code. This year, we are adopting the 2019 California Fire Code, which is, comes from the 2018 International Fire Code and the 2018 Appendix A of the International Wildland Urban Interface Code. If you recall, on November 6th, at our normal hearing, our normal council meeting, we introduced ordinance 1042 with made local amendments to the California Fire Code based on local findings. For example, one of the local changes that we made that has now been codified within the California Fire Code that used to be within our local municipal code would be regulations on photovoltaic systems. So that was one of the changes that we were able to remove from our current fire code, because it's now part of the California Fire Code. We've also made local changes here that pertain to vegetation management, which kind of cleared up the language that was in our 4907.4 section of the California Fire Code, which I think makes it a lot easier for the public to understand and to be able to, I guess, look at it and at what the requirements are for defensible space. And it puts it more into a bullet point format as opposed to a paragraph style format. So we're hoping this way it becomes a little easier for our customers, which is the general public, to be able to understand the fire code. And another thing that we did this year is all of the fire marshals within the entire county, so every fire department within the county of Marin is going to be adopting this similar fire code this year, which now puts us more in line and consistent with everyone else. With that, I'd like to return it back to the council for any questions that you may have.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Fire Marshal Martin?
Yes.
Okay. At this point, I'll open it up to the public, see if they have any comments or would like to ask questions about this item. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for additional discussion, and if there is none and they're comfortable with it, then just take a motion on accepting it.
I just wanted to make one comment. I think it's, Ruben, I really appreciate the work you, you and the team put into this, because it's much clearer, I think. I mean, the bullet pointing and the way that you were able to distill some of the terminology, I think, was very helpful to do that. So I appreciate that. I know it's mostly a lot of boilerplate things, but the reference to the geologic differences that we have in Larkspur and the references to the Madrone Canyon and other areas, I think were more succinct than before. So I appreciate your work on this. I'll move the, I'll move this, item 7.1, if there are no more comments.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt ordinance 1042. On second. Motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that closes our public hearings for the evening. The next item, set of items are going to be business items, and the first thing we have is an update on exploring protections for residential renters and mobile park tenants. So I'll turn it over to our city manager, Dan Schwartz, for a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, earlier this year, the council asked staff to begin evaluating options that the council might consider to create regulations or other schemes or arrangements that would provide protections to residential renters. The genesis of your request was concern about reported increases of rent in the Marin Park Mobile Home Park, but the council did ask us to look generally at the issue of renter protections. We held a workshop and subsequently, a public hearing on the matter. During the public hearing, it was noted that a bill was traveling through the Assembly that was dealing with the same policy issues that the council was concerned about, most notably, the creation of some sort of cap on annual increases in rent, and then also some sort of just cause protections, just cause eviction protections. That bill, AB 1482, did pass and was signed into law. And per your instruction, we waited for that to take place so we could evaluate it in the context of your discussion. We did that evaluation and have provided you with material about, that summarizes the impact of that bill. Mr. Woodruff's firm actually had done a memo for one of their other clients, El Cerrito, and rather than reinvent the wheel, we gave you a copy of that breakdown of the bill, which is attached and in your packet. There are two primary points about AB 1482. Well, three, if we note that AB 1482 applies to residential renters and is not applicable to mobile homes, which have their own place in state law. The primary policy issue, one that you were concerned with, was the creation of some sort of rent cap, some sort of control on increases in rent annually. AB 1482 does that, and so it did address what was one of the primary issues the council was wrestling with. That control is 5% plus CPI, with the amount of 10% being the ultimate cap. It's either the lesser of 5% plus CPI or 10%. The other thing that AB 1482 puts into place is, are some just cause eviction protections. So that was another major policy issue that the council was discussing. And generally, it's the opinion of staff that 1482 addressed nearly all of the policy concerns that the council was wrestling with for renters in general. The one exception really being that we had discussed whether there was value to the city of creating what's called a rental registry, so that we were collecting data that would tell us more about the rental market in our community. That is not a provision of 1482. That said, that was probably the element we were discussing that staff had the greatest concern was implementable, and also, we weren't sure that the returns on having a rental registry were going to be significant, and that was something we had talked about with you during those public meetings. So in sum, it's our recommendation that in light of the passage of this bill, there's no longer a need for local ordinances to address rental protections for the broader renter community in Larkspur, and that we should allow this bill to serve that policy purpose for Larkspur. You also gave us direction, though, to continue to evaluate what, how we might address some of these same policy concerns in mobile home parks. And so we've returned now to you, focusing heavily on the question of whether or not the council can play a role in creating rent increase certainty by creating some sort of rent cap system for mobile home parks. Just cause is not an issue, as we've talked about before, that protection already exists in state law. It's the conclusion of staff, after looking at the different ways that cities have implemented some sort of protection of rent cap or some sort of rent stabilization, that a rent control ordinance of some form, a rent stabilization ordinance of some form, is probably the most effective tool, if that's something the council wants to pursue. That said, there are other tools that are out there. The efficacy is a little less clear to us, but may very well be achievable and reach the same policy outcome. You have some late mail that discusses one of these options, which is an agreement between a city and a mobile home park owner as to how they would implement lease changes for individual tenants within their park. There are other forms of MOU arrangements between park owners and cities that might be something that we could go back and explore further, if that's something that interests the council. The way we've presented this item to you is not to present the parameters of a specific ordinance for Larkspur, but rather to introduce to you in more detail what other communities have done in this area by presenting you with three different samples of rent stabilization ordinances that we think give you a good sense of what is encompassed in those types of ordinances and what types of issues you would have to wrestle with as a council in a public hearing to create such an ordinance. And those issues really are around balancing the need for a park owner to have rents that allow them to return on their investment and invest in the park, but also create some sort of rent stabilization for the tenants. We suggested that you might want to give us direction to draft an ordinance. We could then have a timetable on that process that would allow us to take input from all parties, so that we could come to you with an ordinance that reflected their input and maybe offered you choices based on what we were hearing from different groups. In some of the late mail, you've been asked to consider stretching that timetable even farther and allowing for a stakeholder process to take place to discuss whether there are alternatives to a rent stabilization ordinance. Staff certainly is happy to go in that direction and facilitate a stakeholder process if that's of interest to the council. So you have some alternatives that have been presented to you through the late mail that you may want to consider as well. Mr. Woodruff and Neil Toff, your planning and building director, are present with me and available for questions. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments for staff?
I have, so unfortunately, I wasn't here on July 17th, so catching up on that. But we've had one, I'm just trying to figure out the timeline. We had one workshop or study session on July 17th, then it was brought to us again in September, but then we, because of AB 1482, we tabled it for a while to see what was going to happen. going to happen with that. Meanwhile, have there been any in-person conversations or discussions between the mobile home park, the city, or one of our staff, one of our people about some of these other alternatives?
Some of the elected leaders, including Mayor Morrison, were active in conversations with both the tenants and owners of the park, as were Supervisor Redoni. Your staff's been remaining aside from that and analyzing this without specifics to Larkspur, but to the issue generally throughout the state.
Okay. And a second question is, we have three designated parks within our jurisdiction. Is that correct?
There are two that are what are actually mobile home parks. The third one is a RV park that is allowing long-term tenancy of RVs.
And just the last question, does that third one that you described have permanent or semi-permanent mobile home pad residences, that the typical one that looks like a rectangular building?
I have only individual drive-by, they all look like RVs to me.
Okay. Just trying to sort out where we are on this process. Thanks.
And I do think, kind of a clarification on that, is the sites, sites that are designed for transitory or RV licensed by the state are not necessarily equipped with the same level of facilities as our sites for mobile homes. So it's a licensing through the state that establishes the, in fact, the adequacy of the facilities for RV versus mobile home type of construction.
So the sample ordinances apply then to the first two that were described, as opposed to the third? The sample ordinances, because they are...
Well, the ordinances we gave you apply to mobile home parks in those communities with the parameters that we outlined in the staff report. So local ordinances, for example, they only apply to mobile homes, and they only apply to short-term leases. Leases that are 12 months or longer are exempt by state law from local ordinances.
Oh, okay.
And I, just one more clarification, is that state law does treat RV parks and mobile home parks differently in terms of just cause protections, park closures, the processes for that, so they're... Sorry, I'll repeat myself. The, I just wanted to clarify that state law treats RV parks and mobile home parks differently in terms of things like just cause protections, processes that are available to tenants upon the closure of a park, that mobile home parks have, and the tenants have much more protection under state law relative to RV parks, where state law continues to assume that the people who are residing in RV parks are there on a short-term basis and not actually living there, and state law just hasn't caught up with that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, since there are no questions, other questions for the staff at this moment, I was going to ask the council if they're okay with addressing the rental housing dispute resolution issue first, so that we don't conflate the two. Because what's being proposed by staff is that AB 1482 is adequate to cover all the things that council brought as concerns, and their opinion is that it does. So, does council want to have any further discussion on that?
My only additional recommendation, Mr. Mayor, is you may want to make sure there's not anybody attending the public hearing to speak in contradiction to staff's recommendation on that particular point. I appreciate that, in all likelihood, the vast majority of the public's here to talk about mobile home parks, but we may want to check.
Yeah. So that's how I'm splitting it out, and, you know, as city manager has suggested, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on the matter related to rental housing dispute resolution and rental caps? Okay, seeing none, then I will bring this back to the council and see if what their opinion is on staff's recommendation, or if they're willing to accept it.
I would encourage acceptance of the staff recommendation on this point.
Yeah, I agree with that, because it's consistent.
Do you need a motion on that, since this is just general direction?
No.
Yeah, so you're okay. All right, so now we can move on to the second part, which is to address mobile home park rent controls and rent stabilization. So is there anything else council would like to ask staff about?
No, I've got my questions so far.
I would like to clarify that part of the staff recommendation, for the purpose of the council having a common understanding of what we're focusing on, and that is whether or not to direct the staff to draft an ordinance.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And that comes under the category of, you know, the rent controls and, well, there was another item that was in the staff report related to whether anybody had any appetite for an actual public purchase of Marin Park.
Well, just to further clarify, and also the question of whether or not that direction would include consideration of vacancy control within that draft ordinance.
That would all be open for discussion, so.
And then, in addition, the concept that was described, as you're about to state.
Yeah, I think everything is open for discussion related to the mobile homes at this point. It's just that with the renter controls specifically, we're waiting for what Assembly Bill 1482 would do, and it seems to accomplish what we wanted to do in our original discussion, so I just wanted to remove that, so it doesn't create any confusion of having the same, what sounded like the same discussion on two different, you know, topics and effectively jurisdiction. Okay, so I will open it up to the public at this point and see if anybody would like to address the council on this matter in terms of, you know, what they would like to see in respect to mobile home park rent stabilization. Yes. Yeah, if people would like to just come up, you can just come up one at a time, you know, state your name, place of residence, and we're going to put a three-minute timer on your comments.
Great. Good evening, Acting Mayor Chu, council members, Doug Johnson with the Western Manufactured Housing Communities Association, WMA. You received a communication from me this morning, and I'd like to read it out loud so the residents here in the chambers and I can hear what we're proposing, and then they can have a chance to talk about it. The Western Manufactured Housing Communities...
Just move the mic a little bit, so we can hear you.
Is that better?
Better.
Great. The Western Manufactured Housing Communities Association is a nonprofit trade association representing the owners and operators of mobile home communities throughout the state of California. Having been founded in 1945, WMA is one of the oldest, largest, and most respected trade associations of its kind in the United States. WMA and its members are opposed to rent control, but we realize that housing affordability, availability, and security are important issues that must be addressed. The two mobile home parks located in Larkspur Marin Park and Golden Gate Trailer Park are both upstanding and long-lasting members of our association, and I should let you know that all the owners are here tonight, including their management teams, and we're very privileged to have a former Supreme Court Justice Marvin Baxter here as well. He is an ownership family of Golden Gate, so we're very honored to have the justice here tonight. We want to partner with the city and its mobile home community residents to help build trust, dispel rumors, and open lines of communication, so that together we can find an approach that is fair and that protects the Larkspur mobile homeowner, park owner, and taxpayer alike. I have been with WMA for almost 25 years, and in that time, I have presented scores of viable, long-lasting alternatives to jurisdictions throughout California. I have also read hundreds of city and county staff reports on rent control. The one before you tonight is thoughtful and well-researched. Thanks, Dan. But rent control is an issue that is complex, emotional, and fraught with unintended consequences. There is so much more that needs to be addressed and discussed. As a result, WMA respectfully requests that your council postpone giving direction to the staff to draft a mobile home park rent control ordinance, and instead establish an ad hoc committee or a series of stakeholder meetings chaired by a member of the city council that will address mobile home community issues and the need for rent control or one of its many alternatives. Attached, please find a copy of the City of Rancho Cordova, or Rancho Cucamonga Mobile Home Accord, just one example of a viable, long-lasting rent control alternative. It has successfully and continually been in effect for decades and will come up for renewal in 2026. A whereas clause from that accord reads, and I quote, and this is written by the city, not by the park owners, "Whereas by mutual agreement, a mobile home accord between the city and owner has been in existence from January 1, 1985, to the effective date of this agreement, and said accord has fulfilled its purposes by subsidizing rents for the period of 1985 through 2015, and of generally improving relations between residents and owners within the city." I think this is the way we can go. We have the commitment from all the park owners, give us a chance to sit down and work out something. There are about 110 mobile home spaces in the city, half of them are under long-term lease now, I think five-year leases, so they are exempt by state law from rent control. So we're talking about about 50 spaces that would be affected by a rent control ordinance. I think we can sit down and work out something that, you know, works for everybody, and I would respectfully request that you give us a chance to do that. Thank you. Can I be answering any questions?
Right. Seeing none at this time, we may call you back if we have some...
Great, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I just have one question in regards to whether the WMA also has properties that have the Mobile Home Rental Assistance Program that's been outlined in here, that they are also involved with?
They do. The Rental Assistance Program, the method you're talking about from Orange County, is independent. We don't, we don't, we're not involved in it, we support it, though, because it works and it's in place in scores of parks in California. I know there's been some confusion here in the city with some of the residents regarding Section 8. I think that will be cleared up tonight in some of our comments, but it's a good program, it's been around for a long time, and many cities and counties in the state appreciate and support it.
And it's not, this, having a mobile home rental assistance program within a property does not exclude having these Rancho Cucamonga examples of an agreement.
They do not, because that is not rent control.
So they can be done simultaneously?
Absolutely, and we would actually support that concept.
All right.
Just briefly, I just want to thank you for your efforts to contribute to the dialogue on this issue. I think it's very constructive, and I want to make sure that we all take very seriously into account the suggestions that you've made tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman, I really appreciate that. I've been doing this for 25 years, and I really believe that we can come up with a solution that works for everybody, and you have us all, you have our attention, and we all want to come to that table and work out something that works for everybody in Larkspur. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, who's next? Yes, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me? My name is George Bertram, I'm the fourth. I'm representing my dad, George Bertram III. He owns...
Move that up a little bit, so it gets recorded into the...
Can you hear me better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'm, I'll start over again. My name is George Bertram IV. My dad, George Bertram III, owns the RV park, I think the third one that Dan was talking about with the RVs in it, and he unfortunately can't make it tonight, he had a prior engagement, but he asked me to represent him and read something, a comment that he'd like to make in part of the record, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you. Dear Allison and Admiral Mayor Chu, I'm the managing partner of Larkspur RV Park LLC, located at 11 Brick Street, Larkspur. I built this park in 1978 and have owned and operated the park for 40-plus years. It was designed as an overnight recreational vehicle park, but over the years, I've allowed it to become recreational vehicle park catering to long-term guests. It's quiet and peaceful community of recreational vehicle owners, some who've lived in the park for 20-plus years. To best of my recollection, during all those years through floods, both good and hard times, none of my tenants have complained to the City of Larkspur due to my unacceptable business practices or unreasonable rent. There is no tenant ear in my park. Unfortunately, it now seems that my park is being subject to the City of Larkspur proposed rent control ordinance due to the current confrontation between the residents and the owner of Marin Park, our neighbors next door. Tensions created by Marin Park and its mobile home residents are not present in the Larkspur RV Park LLC and its occupants. It is my hope to prevent the conflicts of our neighbors from impacting the amicable relationship we have with our occupants, which is a struggle for rent control would certainly inject. Over the course of the 40-plus years I have operated my business, I have worked hard to maintain fair practices, positive tenant relations, and do not wish to be unfairly lumped in with complaints related to another business, that of Marin Park. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Comments? Questions?
So just to Sky, actually, just to go back to my question that I had earlier, this type of RV park, it would not be included in any of our ordinance that's rent-specific, because they are regulated through a different organism, they're regulated through a different Business and Professions Code or something?
Well, the state law that affects, there is state law that applies to RV parks, but is not the same as applies to mobile home parks. And as you've now learned some about the topic, understandably, the economic situation and the contractual relations between RV park residents and mobile home park residents is somewhat different. Thus far, the staff recommendation has not included, not included extending any of these proposed provisions to the RV park. If the council was interested in exploring it, it's something that we could do, we would need to do some additional research about it, but thus far, the focus has been on the mobile home parks.
Does that help to clarify some things?
Correct, yeah, and my dad did prepare a packet that I gave to your secretary, trying to clarify those issues between mobile homes and RVs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Bridget Gleason, Larkspur, from the Marin Park Homeowners Council. First off, we want to express our sincere appreciation to all of you for recognizing the differences that exist between situations with mobile homes and regular apartment or home house renters, because there really is a significant difference, and I understand that. You're probably getting an opportunity to learn more about mobile home park situations than you ever anticipated in your life. I also want to let you know that we are in the, we want to work amicably with the owners. We are having a sit-down meeting two weeks from now with the owners. We've invited your two incoming council members to that meeting, although we don't know whether they will be able to attend. If they're not, we will reach out to two of the others of you, and Dennis Redoni will also be there. And this is a meeting that we had agreed when we all met in the early summer, that we would continue to have, to develop a format for ongoing dialogue. It is not our intention to be in an adversarial relationship with the owners of Marin Park or with the City of Larkspur. We want to work amicably, and we would certainly be, I think there are a lot of issues present. My personal, since this was the first time I'd heard it, I can only right now express my personal thoughts on this, but the proposal of having an ad hoc committee to work on this over a little bit more time than just next council meeting with a draft ordinance, I think makes a lot of sense, and we would definitely want to participate and look forward to participating in that dialogue. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I'm the questioner tonight, it seems like. Ms. Gleason, thank you for that. Have you, are you familiar with Mr. Johnson's comments about having the Western Manufacturers Association help them participate with that?
I am familiar with them as an organization. I would be happy to have them participate in a set of meetings. We also have an organization that represents organizations of mobile home owners, and if that professional organization were involved, we would want to have our professional organization involved as well, I'm sure.
It's, it sounds like an amicable way to get everybody in the same room, representing the various... the various stakeholders, and also with people with expertise. So I appreciate hearing that you're interested in that dialogue, because everybody wants to live in a safe, comfortable, and unstressed, full place. So that's terrific. Nice to hear that. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Okay, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Kevin Carroll, Marin Home Park Tenant. One thing, I have a question, and I, this kind of ticks me off, I'm sorry. But the city manager, I believe, or the attorney mentioned there was a late submission of materials, and now another envelope has been passed over with more materials, which it would have been nice if they'd been turned in in time for us to read, so that we could respond to, but instead, they're being added in here at the very last minute. And my question is, are they going to be attached to the agenda afterwards? Or how can the tenants see these communications from the landlords that come in and too late for us to hear?
All materials submitted during our council meetings and all late mail are posted as attachments to the agenda by the clerk. If they're not up now, they'll be up in the morning, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed.
And are there copies of the letters in back? So, so the letters that, other than the packet that was just hand-delivered, there are copies of the letters that were mentioned?
Well, I didn't know anything had been submitted late.
But that's, but they are back there if you'd like to read them.
Thank you.
Kate, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Wally Holmes from the Golden Gate Trailer Park. The information that you guys sent out for us is going to be very, very difficult for us to try to regulate rent control. We have maybe four, five mobile homes, the rest are park models, RV models. How do you judge what's what? And it's going to be very, very difficult to do that. Unfortunately, none of our tenants are here tonight to represent our mobile home park, and we haven't had a rent increase for three years. And our tenants seem to be very happy, and I can't figure out why we're even being brought into this picture. We would like to be just left alone if we could, okay? Any questions? The mobile home residency law, we have to comply with that. Now we have to comply with a lot of other regulations that are coming on, and it's just getting to be too complicated. We need to get away from it, okay?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to address counsel on this matter? Okay, we have someone coming up.
I've spoken to you, I've spoken to you before. My name is Conrad Williams. I live in the mobile home park, and I want to thank you for giving us a chance to speak about our cause of having affordable housing. I bought my double-wide home there 28 years ago. It needed quite a bit of work, and I could bring, so I could bring my mom there and take care of her in her ancient age. It was a good location, the ferry, the bus lines, and they offered reasonable rents in multiple-year leases with yearly raises at inflation cost or 3%. It was to be my home for many years, and I invested much of my savings fixing it up. I added substantial ramp and front porch, plumbing and electrical service for laundry, skylights and a spray foam roof that have never leaked, siding, double glass windows all around, a large planter in front that I keep full of flowers, and rebuilt two storage sheds, and inside, I've added a fireplace. But the ground rent now has been increasing in leaps and bounds, and I may have to sell because there's no place to move my home. I'll lose everything. It doesn't seem fair to lure one into investing years of upkeep and improvements, good work, and then charging rent that will throw me out in the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to address the counsel on this matter?
Good evening, council members. As you know, I've spoken before, I'm Christine Garrett. I own the park with my parents, Gavin and Carol Holly, who are also here. We're the third generation to own the park. I'm the third generation to manage the park. My grandfather started the Marin Park in 1957. I manage it with my husband, who is here. He wanted to speak, but we have a baby, and he had to leave. So my, if you come to the park, my three-year-old son is there riding around on a mule. My daughter's often in the office coloring. I mean, it's really, truly is a family-run business. I wanted to tell you guys a little bit about my background, and one thing that came up just this morning, we had a tenant who was leaving the park. He married a woman from Italy, and he continuously thanked us for our hospitality, and he said that he had looked at thousands of mobile homes and RVs to move in with his wife from Italy, and our park was by far the cleanest, most friendly, and cheapest living option in the area. I don't think you guys have heard much about my personal background and where I'm coming from and managing the park, so that's what I kind of wanted to talk about tonight. It affects the decisions that we make as management and owners. I met my husband in the Dominican Republic in 2005. I was a Peace Corps volunteer there. I came back from the Peace Corps with a need to help people directly. That's one of the reasons that I went to law school. I finished law school, and even before sitting for the bar exam, I worked for tenants' rights advocates. I worked for the Tenants Rights Project in San Diego. So I represented tenants, monolingual Spanish-speaking tenants in unlawful detainers, lease negotiations, habitability issues throughout San Diego, and I loved it, and I was always a tenants' rights advocate. The reason I'm here now managing Marin Park was due to personal circumstances. My parents lost our family home of 30 years in the Tubbs fire. My brother, at age 35, passed away unexpectedly. So we moved up from San Diego, and we had nowhere to move to, given the housing conditions in Marin. I actually moved into the park. I lived in the park for two years with my husband and our kids. And at that time, you know, we really got to know a lot of the tenants on a personal level, as well as the surrounding area. And I can tell you that we didn't take the decision to raise rents lightly at all. I did extensive research. I talked to many organizations, many park owners, and our, even with our 2009 rent increases, our rents remain extremely low. I gave you guys a packet, but 70% of our tenants pay less than $900 a month, with our lowest rent at $822. Only five of our residents pay more than $1,000, with the highest rent being $1,111. This does exclude the homes that were purchased at the increased rent these last years since we took ownership. As you heard from Ms. Gleason back in June, we did meet with the resident group to discuss some ongoing issues, including the proposed leases, and address residents' concerns. I believe that that meeting was extremely successful. We negotiated lease terms for the one- and five-year proposed leases. We extended the deadline to sign, and we heard about multiple residents' concerns in the park that didn't have anything to do with rent control. We believe that a meeting with the residents, with this council's involvement, as well as the WMA or any other organization that's willing to meet with us, would accomplish a lot more than adopting a blanket rent control ordinance. As a family-run business, we don't have the bureaucracy of a corporation. We can make changes and address residents' concerns on a one-on-one basis. A blanket rent control ordinance would force us as owners to make rent increases yearly to keep up with CPI. It would also force us to conduct things like pass-throughs, which we haven't done and the previous owners didn't do for over 30 years. So I think it's a huge point that I'd like to make, that I think rent control has other increases in the tenants' rent that they might not be aware of, that could even be more than our rent increase. The last thing I'd like to say, as the city manager pointed out, is long-term leases are exempt from a rent control ordinance. Forty-two out of 81 of our tenants signed a long-term lease. So in our park, all you're talking about for the next five years is 29 residents for a rent control ordinance. Those 29 residents are the only residents that would be affected. My biggest concern with that, as a manager and being in the office every day, is that it would create a divided park. What are those 42 tenants that signed a five-year lease going to think if a rent control ordinance is passed? There's going to be a complete uproar, and I don't want to see that park division. I would like to see a collective park with everybody on the same page. So I'm hoping, I genuinely hope that this council, Marin Park residents, Golden Gate, and anybody else that's willing, would sit down and resolve these issues at hand in an amicable and constructive manner and avoid adopting just a blanket rent control ordinance right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Garrett?
Thank you. That was very thoughtful, and I appreciate your perspective on that. It's also nice to hear that you're interested in the same type of sit-down and discussion with all the stakeholders, and possibly including the Western Manufacturers Homes Association that Mr. Johnson referenced. So I'm beginning to hear a theme here that sounds like we're going to have some good discussion in the new year.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, good evening.
Good evening. My name is, I'm short.
Yeah, you pull that down a little bit.
My name is Joan Dobkowski. I'm a homeowner at Marin Park. I'm just going to skip around to bullet points, because people have spoken at great length. I think it's great. I'm very excited that you've included the concept of vacancy control in the staff report. It's important, I think, that you understand that the people who signed the five-year lease at Marin Park were concerned that the rent would jump so high if they sold their homes, that they signed the five-year lease to control that in case they were planning on selling within the five years. That was the major concern. There will not be an uproar. We've had month-long discussions about all these things, about how to choose between five years and one year. I think, so anyway, I'm really glad to have seen that. That's very important. I agree with everybody who's spoken about having a joint meeting, as long as pushing the calendar doesn't mean a way of just pushing it forever, but there's an agreement that we want an outcome, that we want something that will be acceptable and really make sense to all parties. It's not just to push it off. I think the, the concept that it's difficult to do things is, it's just not important. Everything was difficult the first time. Everything that changes is difficult. It requires adaptation. I'm sure that there won't be some kind of ordinance that is so vague and bizarre that nobody can figure out how to implement it. It will be fine. So any of these things that come up that would allow us to put something together that keeps affordable housing in Larkspur, that is, and I have to say this to Mr. Johnson, unsubsidized by government. We don't, we're not asking you for money. We're not asking to be part of the budget. We simply want to be able to stay in our homes in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions?
I just want to, again, express appreciation for those comments and for the comments that others have contributed to this dialogue. This is very constructive, and I think, I'll defer to the rest of the council about their sense about how we want to proceed, but having the kinds of conversations and dialogues that have been suggested this evening, I think are really important, and I hope we endorse that. And I personally want to express my own availability to contribute to the success of that dialogue. So if we set something up, I'm happy to join you.
Okay, thank you.
And to piggyback on Kevin's comments, and also the gentleman who asked about late mail, your comments that were just spoken of are also going to be available as late mail. That will be, our city clerk will make sure it's posted, as well as, and I would encourage everyone also to look at the Rancho Cucamonga and Owners Agreement as an option that may be possible, too. And that should be posted, since it did come on late mail also, but you can look for that in the few days ahead. Is that right, Allison?
Rancho Cordova.
Yeah.
In the back.
Oh.
Probably posted tomorrow morning.
Okay, great.
Kate, would anyone else like to address the counsel on this matter tonight? Kate, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the council. You know, we've got a couple different pads, one that was newly suggested tonight, so who would like to start the discussion first in terms of where we'd like to go with this?
I think I just did.
Okay. So Kevin started. Anyone else like to comment on it?
I appreciate everyone's comments tonight, and a lot of the written material that was submitted. I've learned a lot through this process, and I appreciate that we have three different types of living arrangements and living entities there, and three different owners groups, and there's a lot of need to get down and to really do a deep dive, as Ms. DeBrowian, is that your last name? Yes, said, take a deep dive into this among all of the different stakeholders. And so I very much support the idea and appreciate that there is not a lot of, there is no resistance that I have heard to that. So my take is to support what Kevin has said and look at having some discussions moving forward in the new year.
Kate, yeah?
I heard a lot of goodwill expressed, happy holidays. I think you should take that as inspiration to get together and keep talking. That's what I heard tonight, so I don't think I'll be making a motion to give direction on drafting an ordinance this evening, if that's the outcome. That's what I'm hearing, that we're not ready to do that, and that people of good faith and goodwill are going to continue talking and try to work something out. That's what I hear. So I'm happy to be able to say that, because I actually think that leads to the best outcomes. And we're here, we want to help. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Catherine, for your comments tonight. Thank you to our new incoming council members who've expressed a will to help out. So I think this, it sounds like the best of all worlds. Let's keep that spirit going and focus on coming to a win-win here.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, can you step up to the podium, please?
So are you suggesting an ad hoc committee with formally, with a part of the city council? Are you suggesting that we do this privately and separately? I'm not quite clear about that.
I heard, I heard an expression of desire for the council members to participate. I don't have a suggestion on how the structure, Kevin?
No, no, just to be clear, my own suggestion was to have one or more of us, in an ad hoc fashion, contribute to this dialogue.
Okay, great. I just wanted to clarify.
And form a committee of stakeholders, and one or more of us. So, and I volunteered.
Yeah, that was one of the original suggestions as well, was to have council members participate. Somebody said two earlier.
I said two, this is, that is a meeting that is just between the Marin Park owners and the Marin Park homeowners, with two of you invited, and Dennis to continue previous dialogue, but then we could talk about representatives to a committee that would include the city council and the other parks as well.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Let me just, I would, I mean, ideally, and we can do two different levels, but to me, ideally, you all keep talking. It sounds like there's dialogue already happening, that, there isn't dialogue happening?
There's the beginning of dialogue happening.
Okay, so there's uncertain dialogue. All right. So then maybe a more formal structure is warranted. I see. Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I get my clarification?
Mm-hmm.
We've only come this far because this was coming before the council. So I would appreciate and would ask you to consider tabling for a specific period of time, so that this does not drag out. I forget, was it July or August our leases started?
August, June.
June. So by next June, are those of us who did the one-year leases, hoping that some action would occur here, we're going to be under the gun.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
So it would be appreciated if you set a time limit of this being brought back formally to the council to hear a report as to what's happening, and to whether or not to take action.
Can I, can I make a clear expression of my intent? I can only speak for myself. I don't see the council consideration of drafting an ordinance to be used as a hammer.
I'm not asking for a hammer.
I don't see it being used as a lever. I see it reflecting a level of agreement that we can see being fashioned where all interests are balanced, and if the council needs to put a frame, a helpful structure to that within everybody's reason, because we're certainly not going to create exposure for ourselves for things that we can't enforce, for one. And it's just, I don't think it would help anybody to create a battlefield where all sorts of resources then are expended that otherwise could be used for more constructive purposes. So I hope you understand my intention here, is to keep things on the, on the high road for the council and for the city, and if we can find good local examples of things that will be helpful to us, we'll certainly take that into account. But I don't want to create any false expectations.
But I would appreciate if there was at least a recognition that it would be heard before the council.
I believe.
If there's, I would assume if council members attend this community meeting that's being set up, that there would be a council member's report at the following city council meeting, but I'm wondering if it wouldn't be more helpful to say that formally the council will have a hearing in three months.
The mayor, through the mayor, can express the council policy with respect to setting agendas, which is that the mayor and the city manager create the agendas.
That won't be my call, since this is...
Yeah, I know. Really.
That's cheating.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tony Mekasich, I'm also a resident at Marin Park. Just a bit of a clarification, and I don't, maybe everybody else is clear and I'm not. What Ms. Gleason Woodbridge was mentioning about in a couple of weeks, we were going to be getting together with management, that was an agreement that was made at the May 29th meeting that Mayor Morrison and Supervisor Redoni attended, that the tenants and the management would begin some kind, to try to establish a regular interaction so that we could discuss issues at the park, not so that we could, as my understanding is, address the issues of rent stabilization or vacancy control or rent control or anything like that, but to talk about the day-in and day-out nuts and bolts of things that we all interact with at the park. So, I just wanted to make that as a clarification, that that's what this meeting in a couple of weeks is going to happen, and it came about as the initiative of the tenants and the management to continue that commitment we made at that previous meeting last year. It's my understanding that this other issue of rents, rent stabilization and all of that is another interaction that may start now as a result of what's been said this evening. And I don't know if that helps to clarify the level of communication that we've had so far.
Okay, thank you. You look like you want to say something?
When you're ready, I'm ready to make some suggestions, Mr. Mayor.
Please do.
So, I think I need to remind the council and the public that the purpose of whatever exercise you go through is twofold. One is you haven't expressed an interest, at least I heard a few of you, in facilitating dialogue, which has no real deadline attached to it. But the second issue, perhaps the most important to the council, is you have to decide if you want to do something on the regulatory front as the legislative body. And so, my suggestion would be, based on what I heard, the appointment of an ad hoc committee of two council members to work with me to conduct a series of meetings in January and February. I don't know how many that would be, because she thought I was talking to Siri, I wonder what I said. So...
Be careful what you say.
Yeah. You know, I think the conversations will make it clear what actions the council may or may not be interested in taking. My suggestion would be that you commit to a formal report from the ad hoc committee at your February 19th meeting, which gives us almost two months to have some meetings with the stakeholders. That's not a commitment that action will take place on February 19th, that's that the ad hoc committee will report to the remaining balance of the council what you're hearing and what you think might be directions for the council to take. I do think council member Helmer's comments are very important and need to be underscored. The city can't be held to deadlines and constraints that were created by judgments of individual tenants, because the city is talking about putting, either doing nothing or putting regulations in place that have long-term implications for the community and for the city. And so, we will recognize and take into account that there's a date out there that affects some of our residents, some of our Larkspur residents, but we can't make legislative body actions be dictated by that particular date. We can only try as best we can to accommodate it, but these are big, you know, even when you affect a small number of people, you set precedence that later on could affect a large number of people. So, my recommendation is tonight, you appoint an ad hoc committee, although I would note, you have two folks coming on board, and I know at least one of them's been in his council member-elect status actively monitoring what's going on. And I think the other council member-elect's also been trying to pay as much attention as he has been able to. So, I don't know, I don't think it's out of bounds to make, to note that somebody who's coming on could sit on an ad hoc committee, but I'll let the city attorney, of course, two of you may want to do it too.
I actually encourage, with the blessing of our city attorney, to identify one of our incoming council members to participate in this process.
I think that it's fine to appoint somebody to the ad hoc committee who's going to be on the council as of the next meeting. I'm sorry, I'm not sure, I can't always tell how much this microphone is picking up. I think it's fine to appoint one of the incoming council members since they're going to start at the next meeting.
Well, one of the things I can suggest, so that it makes it, let's just say, a little more formal as a matter of order, is that we certainly want to save a month by not waiting until our normal appointments in mid-January. So, since you'll be electing a new mayor the next time, although we don't conduct business, we may want to add an agenda item allowing that mayor to make his or her appointments for this particular committee.
We could do that.
Then, by me doing it tonight, it excludes the discussion of the two incoming council members.
Or her appointments.
I did say him or her.
Yes, we could do that.
There.
Easy.
Thank you for clarifying that. Sometimes the emotional situations, particularly ones that involve people's living arrangements, doesn't provide us a better understanding that we are making policy decisions that are comprehensive for not just the group that is in front of us tonight, but they are policy decisions that have long-lasting effects, and I appreciate being reminded of that. So, thank you for that.
Okay, so to summarize what we've heard tonight, council will have their special meeting next Wednesday, the 11th, and included on that agenda item will be the appointment of two ad hoc committee members to work with the residents and other stakeholders with this mobile, that are part of the mobile home park discussion. And after what sounds like a couple months of meetings, then whatever consensus is reached, will determine whether the city will pursue additional legislation related to regulation of mobile home parks.
Makes sense.
Okay, so, really appreciate everybody's attendance here. It sounds like we have people who are sincerely and earnestly wanting to solve this problem, it's good to hear that you do want to go into a dialogue. And at this point, you're certainly welcome to stay for other discussions on storm drains and, and some of our other ordinance cleanups, but if not, have a happy holiday. Okay, actually, Tom, we can take a two-minute break here while they clear the room.
A shift.
Yeah, there is.
And I wanted to make sure everybody understood that we were not going to be used to create advantage.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, because I was feeling this urge to do this one thing.
Sure.
Because it's for your person.
All right, can we have your attention, please? We are going to resume our council meeting.
Hey, here we are.
All right.
Are you going to take us to the one of the floor, please?
Okay, the next item we have on our agenda, which is the second business item of the evening, is to get a look at the city's storm drain master plan, and we have here tonight our Public Works Director, Julian Skinner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. So, tonight we have for you a presentation of our draft storm drain master plan that was recently completed. And there is an action item on this tonight, which is to adopt the plan. And this is a planning tool which includes many projects and many dollars, but your adoption of the plan is not a commitment to do any of those projects. This is a planning tool that'll be part of our toolbox every year when we do the capital improvement program, and we look at our funding and the projects that are in the various planning documents. So, a quick agenda tonight, we'll talk about what the purpose of the storm drain master plan is, a little bit of background, talk about some of our storm drain facilities, and then some of the improvements that are proposed to improve the conditions, and talk about how some of those improvements could get implemented, and then an opportunity for some questions at the end. So, basically, a storm drain master plan is a collection of capital improvement projects that are aimed to reduce the risk of flooding in the city. And so, we hired a consultant to go through the exercise, which included collection of a lot of data. So, we're looking at all the storm drains, the inlets, the catch basins, the pump stations, all of our storm drain infrastructure. Basically, what we have that converts the rainwater and eventually takes it to the creeks or the bay. And so, they collect all the data on our infrastructure, and then they take that and they analyze all of that infrastructure. Primarily, we're looking at the capacity of our storm drain, can it handle the rain, is it big enough, is it in the right place to accommodate the rain and safely convey it to a creek? But then also the condition of those pipes and the pump stations, as far as do they need to be replaced or repaired? And then based on that analysis, we come up with some improvements to remedy those issues. And then we'll also look at prioritizing some of those improvements and some cost estimates for the same. So, the storm drain, as I mentioned, for the most part is not seen unless it fails, then you see puddles and ponding and flooding in the street, but primarily, what we're talking about is the visible part of it, is the catch basin or the grates that you see in the street, that's where the rainwater enters the storm drain system, which is then a series of pipes that either discharge into a creek, or sometimes they go into a pump station, and the pump station pumps them out to the creek. For the most part, the storm drains are gravity, which means that the rainwater gets into the pipes, the pipes have slopes on them, and the water eventually gets to a creek. If you have areas that are lower, like a basin, or you have areas that are near the creek where the level of the water in the creek may be high, that's where you get pump stations that use pumps to manually force the water into a place where they couldn't get by gravity. And so, as I mentioned, as we're looking at our storm drain system, we're primarily looking at the capacity and the condition of the system. And then this also goes to affecting the environment. As I mentioned before, if we have issues with our storm drains, not only can we get flooding in the street, but we can get things, lead to things getting in the creeks that we don't want in the creek. So, it's important to maintain our storm drain system, not only to prevent flooding, but also to protect the environment. So, after the consultants went out and mapped all of our system, we actually did have some information in our GIS that has some existing pipe sizes and manholes and catch basins and pump stations, but our consultants also went out to the field and verified some of that information to make sure we had the right sizes and locations for these facilities, because then what they do is they build a computer model. Basically, this is graphical representation of our storm drain system, has all the pipes and the inlets and the conditions at the creek. And then what they do is they take the rainfall, so this is a representation of a storm, and every storm is different, and so when you model a storm drain to determine how it's going to function, you pick a design storm to use. And so, the normal practice for a storm drain system of pipes is to take a 10-year storm, which means it's a storm that is of such an intensity that you would anticipate to only see that once every 10 years. And so, intensity is basically how much rain falls, and so this, actually, the rain and the proximity to the hills and mountains of rainfall can actually vary quite a bit from one area of town to the other, and so this is an actual map of the rainfall that they plugged into the model, varies from about seven inches over a day to about five inches from one end of the city to the other. And that's what the modeling shows is the equivalent of a once-in-a-10-year event. And then there's also a hydrograph here, which is the little blue peaks, because when you get a rainstorm, it doesn't all come at once, it doesn't all get spread out over the 24 hours, it has peaks and low periods. And so, the model actually takes all that, it takes your... And so the model actually takes all that, it takes your existing system, it plugs the rainfall in, and it actually goes, it simulates a 24-hour rain event. And what it does then is it, it labels all of your system, this is kind of simplified, but basically red or green. If it's green, it means that system is adequate, it handled the 10-year flow. If it's red, it means that there was too much flow from that storm in that pipe system, and it came out of the ground. So, this model basically identifies the deficiencies, and of course, our crews are out every winter, and we get calls about flooding areas, and so one of the exercises was we took, this is what the model says will happen. We compared that with the real life, what we've experienced, and what the historical records show has happened here. And so, with that information, the consultants came up with some improvements. So we know it floods in these areas, the model shows that the water's coming out of the ground, and in some of these instances, we've had personal experience of going out there and putting sandbags or pumping out catch basins. So the next thing they do is say, how can we fix that? And so it's either additional pipes, typically it's either additional pipes to handle the water that can't get in, or you put a new pipe in that's bigger, because the existing facility wasn't big enough. In some cases, it's, you need a pump station, because there's no other way, you can't put enough pipes there, it's simply a matter of the elevations. And so running through all that data, they came up with a system of basically a kind of a high and a medium and a low for these improvement projects that would correct the deficiencies that were a combination of what we saw in the model and what we've experienced out in the field. And generally, a high priority project is one that we're aware of, one that we spend staff time going and addressing in the winter, and we get calls from residents about flooding, and also in areas where we know we have upcoming projects, and we've already contemplated doing some storm drain improvements. And so, this is a list of what we would call the high priority projects. This is a construction total that summed at the bottom, so it's $7 million. It's in today's dollars, we're not going to do all these next year, so as these projects get phased over time, that $7 million will go up with the future escalation. It's also just a construction cost, there obviously would be engineering and construction management fees on top of that. I'll go through some of these in a little bit more detail later on, but the big chunk number in here is actually something that's already partially funded, it's the Bon Air and the Bon Air Pump Station and the Hillview Storm Drain Improvements, it's a big number in there, 4.3. We're already actually building the pump station, and we have plans to do the storm drains, and we have partial funding, so I'll get into some of those numbers later on, but about three of that 4.3 in the seven is already accounted for, there's no other funding that has been identified for any of the other projects that I'm going to show you. The medium are projects where it shows there's flooding, but they haven't really been an issue, and the depth of flooding is either not that great, or it's not close to any properties where we would suffer any damage. These aren't in any particular order, but it just so happens, the top one on here, Doherty Drive, is very close to a high one, in my opinion. It wouldn't flood any properties, but Doherty's one of our important collector roads, and so there's some importance to keeping that road accessible in some of these events. And then we get down to low priority, these are projects where the model showed that the pipes were not big enough, but we typically don't have significant issues out here in our winter storms, or the level of flooding is minor, and it's mainly contained within the street, and it's not affecting any of the properties. So, you add those up, and you get to about 17 million or so in, sorry, you get to about 13 million in construction costs for identified improvements. And I'll quickly go some of the, through some of the bigger ones. This is the Bon Air or the Hillview project that you saw, that was about a 4.3 number. It builds a pump station on Bon Air Road, and it replaces some of the storm drains in Hillview. This is a project that's already underway. The recommendation from the storm drain master plan is actually a bit bigger of a project than the one we're currently contemplating. We now have funding, and we're currently looking at doing about 75% of this project. The storm drain master plan, when they ran all the calculations, have identified that we should probably go to the next outlet that's not in the works at the moment, it's something we could add on later, but this is the entirety of what the storm drain master plan says would need to be done to improve flooding conditions in Hillview. The second one is Redwood Highway, so this is over on Redwood and Industrial. This is a series of upsizing of pipes that would be needed to alleviate flooding on the street. Another reason why this is one in the high category is because we do have a project upcoming in conjunction with TAM to do some bikeway improvements on Redwood, and so we would want to make sure that we got any pipes under the ground before we did any repaving of the street, so it's one that we'll be probably looking at sooner rather than later. And then, this one is Magnolia, which is one that I didn't mention, but we did have a previous storm drain master plan that was done over 20 years ago, and this is a project that was identified back then, but has never been implemented, and the modeling showed that it's still needed. And so this basically would upsize pipe on Magnolia from Parkway all the way to Larksburg Creek near Magnolia. And again, Magnolia is scheduled for paving in three years, so this is another one that if we feel a need to be done, we'll want to try and get it done somehow in the next three years. I focus mainly on pipe capacity so far, that's what the model shows us. Another aspect of the storm drain master plan is assessing condition. This is a real pipe that was taken out of the ground in Larksburg, or it's half a pipe, that's all that was left of it. Typically, when we're looking at condition, our biggest concern is corrugated metal pipes, they corrode over time, as this one did. We were hoping to get an estimate of the condition of those pipes in the storm drain master plan, but in their attempts to evaluate the pipes, they found a lot of the pipes are full of sediment, and they were not able to get TV cameras in there to properly assess them, and so they did their best they could from the manholes. We figured there's about 12,000 feet of this pipe, and based on what they were able to see from the manholes, we don't have any really significant issues, but based on the age of the pipe, we're going to plug a number in for replacing or lining about a mile of these pipes, and that's about a $2 million number. Another indication of where we have issues like this is where the modeling has shown that the pipes are okay, but we know we have flooding, that's an indication there's something wrong with the pipe, because our model says there's a 15-inch pipe there, it should be able to handle the water that's going through there, but if we experience flooding there in the winter, that's an indication there's something wrong with that pipe. So to summarize the projects, the improvements that are included in the storm drain master plan to improve these conditions, I just talked about the corrugated metal pipe rehab at about $2 million. The construction is about 15.7 for all the projects that are in there. And then engineering, construction management on top of that, because those are just construction costs, is about $20 million in total. Now again, this is, the storm drain master plan is a summary of all the conditions of the storm drain in the city, we don't propose that we're going to be able to fix those in a year, five years, or probably even 10 years, and that's one of the reasons why we've got them into this high, medium, and low. And kind of what we're looking at here is, is based on our assessment of the risk of not funding some of these improvements, we think that all of the projects in that high category are probably things that we're going to need to address in the next 10 years. So if you look at the Bon Air Pump Station and Hillview already being accounted for, we're probably looking for about a $3 million funding gap there. And then when you look at the medium range projects, most of these are not areas where we have extensive flooding, but it does include some pump station upgrades, and we do spend a lot of time in the winter keeping up our pump stations, we know they're old, and they do need some replacements, so we would probably recommend about $1 million from that medium category that goes towards a pump station is going to be a need over the next 10 years. And then of the last category, those probably would just be in the monitor if conditions change, or if we have any pipe failures, there are things that we probably would be looking at. So, the next steps in this, like I mentioned, there's no funding proposal in the storm drain master plan, the document itself does talk about some of the mechanisms that are out there. Historically, we've used some gas tax, we've used some general fund, some transportation funds for doing minor storm drain improvements, we don't have any type of funding identified to address these magnitudes of projects, but what we will be doing is, as we come forward with the capital improvement program in the spring of next year, we'll be using this document and analyzing it and trying to plot out which of these projects we think need to fit into a five-year capital improvement program, and then having a discussion about where should those funds come from. So the capital improvement program we do every year is a five-year plan. I think some of these projects in here, I think it's realistic to look at, what we can probably get completed over a 10-year span, and so, one of the things, the directions that we're going to be looking at when we bring the capital program to you is looking at these high priority projects, looking at the pump stations, and then the CMP replacements. So, those all told is about a $6 million gap that we're going to be looking for and having conversations about sometime in the near future. And so, again, the action requested tonight is that you adopt this plan, so we can use it as a tool when we're talking about capital budgets moving forward, so I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Julian. Does anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to direct to Julian regarding this plan? Yes, Dan?
Would you expect the frequency of updates to this plan to be more frequent in the future?
Yeah, I would think so. Again, looking at the documents that were done some time ago, those were before the days of computerized modeling, so as we've got this, we've got a tool now that's a lot easier to update than something, we basically had to start from scratch with this one, so setting up that computer model, one of the advantages is you've got a working base for the next iteration.
How, the assumptions on which you're basing some of your assessments, do you think those assumptions will be changing more rapidly in the future?
As far as the amount of the rainfall and...
Conditions?
They may. There's obviously, we have a number of storm drain facilities that discharge to the creek, and the capacity of our system is affected by sea level rise, because the creeks will be ultimately, and so there are factors that will change over time. The rainfall is based on historical data, and so it looks at 100 years and picks out what it thinks a 10-year will be for the last 100 years. And so, looking at 100 years of data, I don't really think that'll change over the next while, unless we really get some crazy winters. And part of the analysis actually looked at the, was it New Year's Eve 2005, looked at that storm as a model. And so, I think some of the things will evolve, but not at a, not at a, not at a great pace, because again, this does look at a wide band of data when it, when it does the analysis.
So you're comf, you're comfortable that the ranges that you're using to kind of capture these issues, give you some, a timeframe to be able to make good decisions about your resources?
Yeah, I think that, looking at a, at a 10-year window, I don't, I don't anticipate there'll be a whole lot of change. I think one of the things that will often change is in some of the newer cities that aren't built out, and there's a question as to how will the development change the landscape. The rain may not fall, but if you pave a whole bunch of areas and create shopping centers that were not there before, it changes the runoff, and it really changes the dynamics of, of your storm drain system. We're pretty much built out, and so I don't anticipate that that is going to change either.
Thank you.
In reference to that, Julian, also, when I read this report and then walked along the Cordero Dara Creek, we have these corrugated outlet valves that go from like Harvard Drive and Hillview area, but on the opposite side of the berm there that you can walk on, which isn't our jurisdiction, there are deteriorating corrugated pipes that are obviously dangerously looking, they have signs saying, "Don't step on the pipe," because I'm sure they're fragile. That's not our jurisdiction, but it seems like it's within the entire system of the flow. Well, I'm not an engineer, so I'm going to say, how do we, or are there opportunities to coordinate so that the repairs are consecutively done with that area that's not our jurisdiction? Because it's a part of a whole system, it seems like.
Yeah, so some of those things that are on a, on a grander scale, so the storm drain master plan is really looking at our pipes and our, and our catch basins. When we start looking at bigger systems and how things work together is, is one of the things we do with our partners at the county, Ross Valley, and they're actually looking at the creek, and when they're looking at the creek, they're looking at, for example, those culverts that go to Hal Brown.
Right.
And how that area serves for detention with the creek flow, and they're talking with us, with what we're doing in, in Hillview and with the Bon Air Pump Station, that's kind of on a larger scale. The storm drain master plan is really narrowed down into our inventory and, and our infrastructure, but yes, you're right, these things, if one area floods, it, again, it doesn't know boundaries, and so those are conversations we do have with, with flood control.
Okay. I, I just thought that, I saw that when I was walking out there the other day. The second question I had is, and I don't know if this is the time for it, there's work being done in Creekside that looks, is that part of the storm drain issue that's happening in Creekside off of Magnolia, or is that a different project?
No, the Creekside project is being undertaken by their HOA, those are private sanitary sewers, it's not storm drains.
Kevin?
Just a couple of quick things, just to, basically to follow up on, on what council members, Helmer and Wade just brought up. On the, on the frequency of updates, I think that's really, really important, because one of the things I think we've all learned in the last couple of years is, as a result of climate change, or whatever you want to think has contributed to it, past predictions are, or, or past experience is not good predictions for the future. We've seen that with the fires, and we've seen that in various other things, so the more frequently we're able to update our data set and, and provide that information to the council and the public, that'd be great. Kind of following up on council members' ways, questions about the, our relationship with other agencies in the county in particular, can I flip back to slide eight? I don't know that I numbered them on here, so you may have to tell me when I get to eight. So this is the, there were the one entitled "Results." Yeah, and, yeah, the one after that, and I'm, I'm, I'm kind of looking at my black and white slide deck here, but one of the things that I've raised before, and when we've had conversations about this, is over in the Greenbree community, the fact that we have a relationship with the county, because our jurisdiction is up in the hills.
Right.
And since we have, everything flows through gravity, it ends up going through storm drain, storm drains that are the responsibility of the county.
Right.
Right below where I live. So, if I'm missing, not missing something, I think we're kind of low priority on La Cuesta, up above the connection or the intersection with El Paseo, but below that, that's the county's jurisdiction, and that looks like where there may be more problems, so I'm wondering if you could maybe address how we are working together with the county to make sure that the overall system in the Greenbree Hills is functioning properly.
Right, so we did coordinate with the county with this report, as, as you mentioned, there are streets there that go from city to county and back to city again, as do some of the storm drains. We actually modeled that area all as one, because the water goes through the pipes and ends up going through the, again, through private property, so it's part of the storm drain system is in the city, part of it's in the county, and then part of it goes through private property. So we modeled all of those. The improvements that we show here are only the ones that were required in the city. There were actually no, one of the issues with the, or one of the things that helps the Greenbree Hills is the, the level change, and so pipes capacity is increased the steeper it is. And so, we only actually had one area in all of Greenbree, including the county, where we had a capacity issue. Most of the issues we've seen in the Greenbree Hills are the old corrugated pipes that have come apart or corroded, but because we're dealing with a hillside that's steep, most of the pipes that are there are able to handle the capacity. Now, when you get to the bottom of La Cuesta on Sir Francis Drake, we do have some pipes there, that's one of these yellow boxes where there is a capacity issue, and so that's actually in the county's jurisdiction, but it showed up in our model, and so we've relayed that information to the county for them to evaluate whether they want to look at an improvement project for that. Storm drain down on Sir Francis Drake, other than that, I believe we had a few... we had a few up in Parkside and Elysio, kind of the smaller yellow boxes there are areas where we get down to the bottom of the hill where we actually did also have some issues with capacity in the Greenbrier pipes.
Okay, I just raised that because I have great confidence in the skills and abilities of our Larkspur team to deal with matters within our jurisdiction. I'm less confident with respect to other jurisdictions, but I, you know, I don't know. But I do know just from visual observations in my own neighborhood, that there are storm drain inlets into the system that is under the control of the county that seem to be not particularly well-maintained. So I worry a little bit that we're working on taking care of what's up top and what's down below. But there's a section in between that is not under our control that may be problematic. And I want to make sure that you feel comfortable that the relationship we have with the county and managing those parts of the system is working out.
Yeah, as far as the data that we take out of the storm drain master plan for our analysis of those systems, whether it's city or county, we've had those conversations with the county. We have not identified any significant deficiencies in the county system as far as capacity from the storm drain master plan.
Okay, anything else? All right. Would any members of the audience like to ask any questions or make comments to our Director of Public Works? Yes, your name, please?
Kevin Carroll, Marin Park, again. And you mentioned the improvements on Redwood Highway would be tied in with the bike lane project. But there's no funding, right, as of now. But when is the bike lane project supposed to be taking place?
So the bike lane project that I was referring to is the north-south Greenway. The section that the city will be implementing on Redwood Highway is probably about two years out. The next phase of that project is actually being managed by Caltrans. And that will take the bike path next to the off-ramp, and it will land on Redwood Highway. And then the city's project would take it from there. We can't do ours until Caltrans does theirs. And based at the time of year we are, I don't anticipate Caltrans to be doing their project until next summer. And then we would, at the earliest, follow up the summer after that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to ask questions? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to the council. If there's additional discussion, we can have that. Otherwise, what staff is asking for is for us to adopt Resolution 7619, adopting the storm drain master plan.
Subject to further conversation by the council, I'd like to make that motion approving the resolution.
Okay, any additional discussion? If not, we need a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Julian. Good luck with this. Okay, we have one more business item tonight, and that would be the introduction and waiving, or introduction and waiving of Ordinance 1043. And it's to amend various sections of our municipal code to coincide with state-related statutes that are part of our municipal code. And we have Neil Toft, our Director of Planning.
Planning a building. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Chu and members of the City Council. Tonight, we are here primarily to present a, Ordinance Number 1043 to amend Chapter 15, our building regulations, to adopt by reference various parts of the 2019 California Building Standards Codes. Every three years, the California Building Standards Commission adopts and publishes an updated code. They did this, published the code just a couple months ago, and it does take effect on January 1st. And in this, what you see in the text changes are largely changes to the reference from our last adoption in 2016. So primarily you see 2016 being replaced with 2019. There are a few local amendments, primarily, largely aligning local amendments with the CBC to various fire code standards. We did not do any changes to the California Green Building Standards at this time. I'll be talking a little bit about that in a minute. Another item here is we adopted Appendix Q of the California Residential Code, which provides exceptions to allow for tiny house construction. So this is something that could support our housing element and housing production. And what that allows for is sort of modular types of homes of 800 square feet or less. You can have some exceptions to things like rise and run, head heights, and a few things like that for very small homes. We're adding an additional foot of freeboard to the base flood elevation in flood-prone areas. And we're enhancing fire prevention documentation as part of the resale reporting process. This will involve a little more oversight with the Central Marin Fire Department. And we're also looking to revise the language of the undergrounding utilities requirements, particularly to clarify that we would be requiring undergrounding of utilities in conjunction with substantial renovations. We had tried to include that in 2016, but the language was a little bit ambiguous. So we're trying to make that very clear. We're also doing a favor to Julian. We're going to switch the oversight of the requirement from the Public Works Directors that are the building official, because it is primarily through the building permits that this requirement is triggered. And it typically occurs largely within the private property. The, and we're also including in the exemption language for projects where undergrounding may exceed 20% of the valuation of the project, they can demonstrate that, then it would be exempt from requiring undergrounding. Outside of Title 15, our building code section, we're also proposing to modify Chapter 12 regarding heritage trees. Again, this is aligning with the fire code and the practices of the Central Marin Fire Department, replacing the term pyrophitic trees with fire-prone trees, and expanding the list of fire-prone trees so that the fire department has greater oversight. And we've, we've aligned our, our heritage tree regulations with that of the fire department. This we've done in conjunction with both, of course, the fire code, which you're, which you've adopted earlier this evening, as well as consultation with the fire department and Fire Marshal Ruben Martin, who's here tonight to answer any questions on some of those, any of those issues. So with that, one thing I did want to touch on is, city staff has been working for a couple of years now with the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership. And that's a group of cities, as well as the county, working on sustainability programs and policies. And one of those policy discussions has been reach codes. And these are updating the building standards to further enhance GHG reduction measures. And Marin County has recently adopted, just a little over a month ago, model ordinance. What they've adopted are reach codes, which they're considering as a model ordinance that other cities are considering. This would require EV charging stations at a greater rate than necessarily included under the building code, and enhanced energy standards to really encourage all-electric residential construction. While we do want to promote GHG reduction and meet our, our climate action plan goals, we have identified some concerns with the model ordinance, how it would apply to our code, and the practicality of, and potential unintended consequences. So we're continuing to review this with the county staff, and we plan to return to the council early in 2020 to kind of do a little more in-depth dive on those reach codes. I also note, and you're probably aware, there is growing community interest in installing generators and, for residential use, given the effects of the public safety power shut-offs. And we are in the process of preparing some amendments to the noise ordinance to better accommodate fixed generators that might meet the fire code, to really encourage fixed generators that would meet fire code standards. And so that's something we're working with Ruben on. The Santa Fe and a couple other communities have adopted some ordinances to, again, try to be a little more flexible with the noise standards, but better regulate those generators. And so we'll be coming to that, that to you very soon as well. So with that, I would recommend the council introduce and waive first reading of Ordinance 1043. Do you have any questions?
Okay, council, have any questions for our planning, building director, or the fire marshal? Nope, over this side. While she's looking, I'll tell you one thing, if I had my generator out, you, you wouldn't want to change the noise ordinance. I mean, the old-style gasoline ones are loud. This is in the days before inverter generators.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's what we're seeking to discourage, really. We want to encourage fixed, more efficient generators, gas, natural gas-powered generators. Batteries are also coming online, becoming a more practical approach to backup, although they're not necessarily as reliable in the long term, and they certainly have their own cost issues as well. So we're trying to find the right balance. And certainly, this is something that for, from a building permit standpoint, we could apply to permits for fixed generators while still maintaining a fairly restrictive approach towards portable generators and diesel or gas-type of generators.
Yeah, I know Mill Valley, I think, suspended their noise ordinance during the PSPS. So that was my first thought. I sent Dan an email and basically said, "Well, I'm not going to be using mine unless it's life-threatening and Public Works needed," you know, so. Find what you're looking for?
No, well, no, it's nothing.
Okay. Well, I'm sure if you remember, you can always email Neil, and there'll be a second reading of this.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be back in, in January for a second reading.
Okay. Any members of the audience like to comment or have questions on Ordinance 1043? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. If there are no other questions or comments, then we're looking to introduce and waive first reading of Ordinance 1043.
I'd be happy to make that, that motion. But before I do, I just want to thank Neil and your, your staff for working on this. And this is, may seem to members of the public like kind of mundane stuff, but it really is very important to make sure that our ordinances in these respects are brought up to speed and contemporaneous with, you know, what other communities throughout the Bay Area and elsewhere are doing. So I just want to thank you and the staff for working on this sometimes thankless project. Thank you.
You can see that it's a multifaceted thing when, you know, Central Marin Fire is part of it because of public safety things associated with that. And, you know, you've talked about the climate change, and all this stuff is all coming together now. Okay, Kevin made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That basically concludes this evening's meeting, and it is now...
Before we adjourn, could I just make one, because I will not be here, unfortunately, for next meeting on December 11th. So I just want to thank my colleagues here on, on the council for all the hard work they have done for years and years and years, particularly the two members who are now, well, one of which has already departed and will be soon to, another soon to be departing, unfortunately. We will, we will, we will miss him. And I also want to extend my congratulations to the new council members who will be joining us, and to our new mayor. And I wish us all good health and good luck in the new year. And thank, thank you all.
Thank you.
You're here.
Yes. Are you, you going to be around next week, or are you already gone?
He's gone.
I, I have to be in Los Angeles for work reasons next week, so I'll, I'll be missing the next meeting.
Okay, sorry. You'll miss the next meeting as well as our annual holiday party, but...
So you did make the motion.
I will be there.
You will be there, yes. Okay, well, for the rest of us who are here, we will see you next Wednesday. And hopefully, you can also make the holiday annual party for all city staff and council members.
And there's two tree lightings tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, tree lighting and...
From Harris and Bon Air.
And Bon Air. And I believe, Kevin, you're lighting the tree at Bon Air, is that correct?
I am assured that everything is well-grounded in, in Bon Air, because my 88-year-old mom is going to be in attendance, and I don't want to see her fry, so.
Or her son. Okay, we will now adjourn this meeting at 8:35 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a happy holiday.